Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We also have Colin and Julie joining us. Hey guys, good to have you here.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everyone?
As you're coming in, head into the chat, say hello, let us know where you're coming in from. We're really excited to have you here today. If you're brand new, maybe let us know that in the chat as well. Today we are doing a Get Oiling orientation. So if you're new to Get Oiling, if you're curious, maybe interested in getting started, maybe taking advantage of some of these convention specials that we opened up that are finally going away completely on Sunday night. You're going to love what I'm going to show you here today. So again, welcome. We are Get Oiling, we are a platform that allows you to really release the stress of needing to manage a bunch of things and just manage your business all in one place. We are built by brand partners for brand partners. We understand your business, we love what you do, we do what you do. And of course, we are here to support you every step of the way. So thank you for putting your trust in us. You are the reason why we're here and doing the work that we do. And of course, every feature that we have here is here because a brand partner like you asked for it. And we're not going to get into all the features of Get Oiling today, but we will get into the ones that will be most impactful for you getting started, whether you have a seed plan or you're just getting started with us at any plan level. So we are going to pop out a video and get into some slides that I have prepared for you. And we'll come back out and join you here in just a bit. We've got a lot to get into today. We've got a live work review, we've got a lot of demonstration we're going to be sharing. So please do go ahead and turn off any distractions that you might have. If you have questions, make sure those are going into the Q and A here on the live call. So we don't miss any questions that come up. And yeah, let's talk about this. Today we're going to talk about what it looks like to get started with Get Oiling. This is what you can do first, how you can get the most from your membership. So today we'll talk first about an exciting new update in our system. We've had a lot of those recently and we've got a pretty cool one here today. Colin's been hard at work making some beautiful page templates for you to use if you're making custom website pages. We'll talk about how to set up your system with clarity and confidence right from day one. So if you're new to the system or you're looking for a refresher on the basics, you're in the right place. We'll talk about where you can go to personalize your brand on your website so that your website feels like you. Again, no matter what plan level you're at, no matter what skill level you believe you possess. We'll talk about how you can start sharing and following up without feeling lost and where you can go to find done-for-you content on your next step forward. And of course, as always, live help and Q and A, this is your place to go every single week unless it's convention or there's a holiday and we're off with our families. We're here every week for you. You can get hands-on help, learn something new, connect with your community. We love having you here. We're here every Thursday at noon US Eastern time. So if you're here and you have questions on the live Zoom call, please do add those to the Q and A. And if you are watching this as a replay, join us. We are live again every Thursday noon US Eastern time on Zoom. GetOiling.com/weeklyworksessions is where you can go to sign up for these calls, to be the first to get resources and of course, to be notified of our upcoming topics. If you'd like to work together on a call, like I believe Kay, if you're here, Kay, maybe let me know in the, maybe pop your hand up, let me know that you're here. Kay signed up for a live work review today. We're going to troubleshoot something together. If you want to do something like that in the future, you can. It's totally free. You've got the option to have eyes on your work, to have hands on your account where it's needed and to help you really get through any troubleshooting, problem solving, or even sort of strategic centering that you may be looking for where it pertains to use in Get Oiling. And if you'd like to just hand off a project to someone who's an expert that could get it done for you, that's an option too. We've got wildly talented designers and strategists on our team, even VA services. If you're looking for some help and support, our team has got your back. Go to GetOiling.com/concierge to learn more and get a no obligation call scheduled. All right. Now before I get into today, let's give Colin his flowers. You guys know Colin, right? When, when you send an email in, this is one of the kind people that you might see giving you a response. And Colin does a lot of really cool work with coding. Colin is, is really a genius where this stuff is concerned. And a lot of these templates that you see here, when you go to create a new page, and here's two of those here, this pro coaching homepage and the rugged homepage are two of these that came recently. You can actually go and open these up. These are all things that you have access to, to put into a page. If you have a basic or higher plan, and all you've got to do is just go in and change what's here to make it your own. So here's a really cool one that's really built around fitness wellness, right? If that is something that you are focusing on, we've got one here that's centered on coaching. That's really nice. Check out that background. Isn't that great? Love it, love it, love it. And there's one more, and I think it was a sales page, right? Let me see. Yeah, this one.
Yep, the watercolor.
Yeah. All right. And there's even some instructions here too, pretty cool, right? So you can go through and you can see, and of course, if you want to preview what these look like when they're live, which you absolutely should, and they look great, you can just go in and make those changes. You don't have to worry about how to insert, you know, images here or there, or to make them behave in a particular way. You can just go in and make those swaps. These templates are here and they're great. So Colin, thank you so much for these new additions. Got some love over here in the chat. She says, Christina says Colin is amazing and fast at figuring out what I have done wrong lol. Yeah, he's a champion troubleshooter as well, as it turns out. All right. Thank you, Colin. We've got a great team and of course, we are just, you know, so happy that you guys like what we're doing. All right. So let's get into this. Let's talk about getting started with Get Oiling. My first piece of advice for you, whether you are a star brand partner, you're just getting started with building out your customer base and your team, or you're a diamond or higher, no matter what it is that you are, that you would like to do. If you are just getting started with Get Oiling, my encouragement for you would be to start with the business you have today. The reason I say this is because Get Oiling is a fully equipped machine. And if you think about how complex a machine can be, if you're just getting started with using it, you could overwhelm yourself, right? We have so many options that are available for you to grow how you want. And that's the important thing to know is that what your business needs, you can do with us. And where your business needs more later, it's here for you when you're ready, right? So start where you are. So you don't need to use every single feature that Get Oiling offers right away or even ever completely to get great value from Get Oiling, right? What we'll do as you're working with us is we'll show you how to start simple with tools that your business already needs so that you can show up for the business that you have and grow into the business that you want with tools that you feel confident using. And when you're ready to grow, right? When you're ready to start marketing in a new way or positioning yourself differently or expanding what you offer, everything that you need is already here. You don't have to go source another platform, learn another tool, buy another thing. When you're ready to expand into it, we are ready for you. But you will absolutely get incredible benefit for just taking action on the needs of the business you currently have today, right? Just know that you're in the right place. If you're a brand partner, this is where you need to be. Whether you're sending your first email, you're ready to run a full funnel, we've got you covered. Even if you don't know what a funnel is yet, it's okay. The system is something that is designed to grow with you, right? From sharing and living all the way up through to building a personal brand, we even have chiropractic practices that serve their young living customers and their chiropractic patients using a Get Oiling site and system, right? There's so much again, that you can do with us, but you don't have to do it all, right? Do what your business needs and we're here for you every step of the way. And you won't need to learn another platform when you're ready to expand what you're doing. So what this training is and isn't, number one, this is not a checklist of everything that you could do. That is impossible to fit into an hour. It's just, it's not something we could do in an hour because you could do so much. What this is, is a walkthrough of the simple things that you can and should do right now to move forward. And I would argue the things that you ought to maybe dedicate yourself to mastery over first. And you're going to see how to personalize, share and connect with your people and know where you can go to explore what's next for you. So the first thing that we want to do is, is get our website ready. Now with Get Oiling, you already have preloaded out of the box, a bunch of beautiful responsive compliant to different markets, attraction marketing powered website themes. What does that mean? Pre-built, ready to share website themes that share Young Living products without being Young Living billboards, which is the more effective way to share, right? Because if we go out there and we tell the end of a story, who is going to buy the book, right? So the, the website themes that we have with Get Oiling are really nicely made and they are your own. And all you need to do is a couple of really simple, easy things. It'll take just a few minutes. And I've even got a sort of prompt prepared for you to give you an idea of what might be effective. And then you're off to the races, right? So when you signed up for Get Oiling, after you put in your payment information, selected your plan and everything, we asked you for your Young Living member number. And this is going to plug into your system in a number of different important and intelligent ways. One of which is all of the links on these built-in website themes that point to Young Living products already have your member number attached. So if somebody is on a Wellness for Kids built-in website theme that you have and, and they see the Ally Blend, right? When they click that and they go off to explore more and potentially buy it, they're going to Young Living with your member number attached to that link. So when they sign up, they put that in their cart, that's your customer, right? So that's a really cool thing that you have built in with Get Oiling. And so all you need to do to start sharing is just add your story and your photo. That's it. And this is something that anybody could do. Tell me you're not techie, it's totally fine. Here's what I want you to do. This is easy. So my story and photo, it's as easy as using Facebook. What I want you to do is upload a photo of you and then add some background information. And we have this section that says meet your name. So it'll have, you know, your name there. It has a built-in contact button. Now, but let me just go and show you because if you don't know what this looks like, it is important for you to see it. So here I'll show you, this is the basic oils theme that's built in. And right here we have, well, the title, right? So this is that meet your name. And there's a contact field here that's going to automatically pop up the email address, phone number, the, all this contact form here. And they can send a message to you, someone who's on this website if they want to. Your photo will go here, your story will go here, the contact button will be below. And then they can keep scrolling and we've got videos that are produced by Young Living that talk about these different things. And then they start to, again, in an attraction marketing sort of way where we're not actually saying Young Living necessarily, where we're keeping it curious. Where they can say, oh, interesting, what is a relaxation support blend? And when they go click it, if you note up here, do you see these numbers in the sponsor ID and enroller ID? It carries that over, right? So that relaxation support blend, we now know is Stress Away. And they can put that in their cart and be coded to you. So you can send them to your shopping link to different bundles. And again, we do have these themes, some of these things set up for different markets. So if you aren't, we have global, we have Canadian, et cetera. There's a lot of different options here. So definitely make sure that you set up the one that you want for you, which I'll show you how to do in a moment. But we go over here to my story and photo, which is where we're starting. All you have to do is click and then go find a photo of you and upload it here. And here, this is where we can say your name, right? And then we can come down here and share your story. So this is where I'm referring to right now. This is where we can go first. And it's where I recommend everyone go first. People are going to arrive at this website and see that top image on the built-in theme, followed by your story and photo. So you see how this really kind of personalizes the built-in theme. So we're going to use this section to welcome the visitor to your website. And you can share your story, but we really highly recommend leaving some space for curiosity and follow-up conversations here. Remember again, what we are doing is trying to draw people in, not to just buy an oil, but to potentially make life-changing decisions, right? Absolutely becoming open to changing the way they move through their life, the way that they shop, the commitments that they keep to themselves, right? That's what we're really here to do. It's not just buy one oil, buy one kit, I did it. It's can I help someone see incredible change in their life and then they're a customer forever, right? So what I want to recommend that you do here is keep curiosity. I'll show you an example of what that looks like in a moment. But you can also do is to have this section appear other places, right? So this, my story and photo can show up at the bottom of blog posts, at the bottom of event listings, as well as at the bottom of landing pages and on the digest pages for all of your blog posts and all of your events. So you can use this in multiple places. So here's how I might recommend that you share your information. Welcome to my website. For the past eight years, I've worked to educate and serve moms on a journey toward health freedom. If you're looking for ways to take control of your family's wellness, you've found your advocate. It hasn't always been this way though, and it nearly took a health crisis for me to wake up and look for a better way for me and my family. Once my good friend introduced me to the concepts and products you'll find on this page, everything changed. Within a week, it was like stepping out of a fog. If you're ready to step into your own journey and take control of your family's wellness, read on and feel free to get in touch if you have questions. So do you see here how I am not saying health condition, right? I'm not going into non-compliance, but I'm also not saying Young Living or product names. Because at this point, someone who's on your website, they don't care about those details. They care about whether or not your story reflects theirs, your pain reflects theirs, right? So make sure again, that you are using this kind of philosophy to drive what you are sharing. And don't worry, when we share the replay of this video, this copy will be on the blog post for you to copy and edit for yourself if you'd like. All right. So the next place we want to go is customize my site. This is another setting that you will find right over here in the website and blog settings. And this is where we can do a number of important things that we will talk about here in just a moment. But just know that that's right here under website and blogs, the second thing that I recommend that you do. So on this page, we can choose a built-in theme. Or if you have a basic or higher plan where you want to create a custom homepage, you could use a custom page as your homepage. You can also choose to require that a landing page be filled out before someone is able to view your website. This is optional and it is, I think something that I would only choose if you're strictly using your website as a sharing tool. If you're just using a custom website, I would definitely not use this. It does create a little bit of confusion if it's not set up strategically. Here you can upload a logo if you want, it's optional. You could also upload a Fabicon, which is also optional. I'll show you what that is in just a moment. You can customize your footer for your website. You can set a 404 page if you want to, which is just where you send people if they click a broken link. You can customize your built-in theme here as well. There are quite a few available depending on your market. And then you can add social media sites that will display in the footer. So let me show you what all of that looks like here. First, you can choose your homepage here and these are all the built-in website themes. In this particular one, this is for the US market, you can see all of these that are available. So maybe I would prefer to use the healthy homes. I can save the changes here and I'm not using a landing page. And when I view my site, you'll now see that I have an entirely new website theme. Ideally, of course, my, my story and photo are here. It's recommending different products. It's still got some of these videos, right? So it's, they're similar, but you can make that modification. You can upload a logo image here if you wish. You don't, certainly don't have to. It'll show your name, right? If you don't, you can also add a Fabicon. So if you see this little teal dot drop, that's a Fabicon. That's the Get Oiling logo. So you could certainly upload something like that here. If you hover over these little eyes here, it'll indicate recommendations for the size of that image. So if you wanted to create one in Canva, you can do that. If you have a branding package on a basic plan or higher, if you have premium and higher plans, you can customize your footer and maybe build a custom footer. And you can also of course, adjust for a 404 page, which is something you would do on a basic or higher plan. Or you could just leave it as your site's homepage. You can customize the built-in theme here. There's some options as well. If you want a custom opportunity video for the opportunity page. And then if you go down here to edit my social media sites, these are all going to be in your built-in website footer. If we scroll all the way down here, I don't have any listed, but you would actually be able to see those if they were entered. So you can actually put these in and they will modify the footer for you, right? So this is another thing that you can do. Again, if you don't have a lot of ideas for changes, just again, go with what you need. When you need something, it's there for you, right? If you need something later, it's there for you to modify it. All right. Now, if you are new to having a website or you're a young living business, stick with one of these built-in themes. It's worth it to keep it simple, right? Just keep it simple for now, have something that is beautiful, that is complete, that is compliant and go from there. But if you do want a quick custom site and you are on a basic or higher plan, you can use the quick setup feature to automatically generate up to five custom website pages for you. But note that if you choose this option, it's going to give you about 85 to 90% completion, depending on how far you want to dial in your customization of a page. So make sure that if you are using the, the, this quick setup, that you are setting some time aside to familiarize yourself with the page builder, maybe catch one of our trainings, hop onto office hours here and get some help if you need it. And of course, we recommend using these easy use built-in themes like the ones I showed you that Colin made before moving into full customization. And always remember, if you don't remember anything else, progress over perfection. So let me show you where that feature is here real quick. That is this quick setup right here under website and blog. Here you can add your profile photo, your logo, and when you move to the next step, you can choose a theme, you can choose the pages you want included, describe yourself and what you do, who you serve, and it'll actually create copy or the words on the page for you and plug it right into the theme that's been created. So it's a really cool thing that you can do. Of course, highly recommend this if you want to go personalized. But make sure that you do use the built-in resources first. Again, you're going to find that it's a lot easier to start using the system for what you need right now and then gradually move into the more complicated and sophisticated ways of working. All right. So once you've got this set up, sharing is super easy. So from your dashboard and Get Oiling, you're going to look for the share my site link. And here you're going to find direct sharing links for your social platforms. So if you wanted to share your website on Facebook or Twitter or wherever, if you want to link to your Get Oiling website, you want a direct link to sign up for Young Living and more. So let me show you really quick what that looks like from your dashboard. We go to share my site. You can see here, you can actually share your Get Oiling website here to any of these platforms. Here's your direct link to your website. Here's your direct Young Living referral link. And then if you wanted to refer someone to Get Oiling, or if you wanted to connect your digital upline coach, you could do that here as well. All right. So the next thing we want to do is start collecting leads and educating customers. So we provide, Get Oiling provides weekly content to keep your list engaged. And we provide a funnel and the content to keep it running. So what you get here is a landing page and that allows you to collect names, emails, phone numbers. This is really great for you to have on your social profiles. Maybe have set up at vendor events, things like this to collect leads. And what we allow here is the ability for you to send out every month, or actually every week is what this looks like. We release on a monthly basis, a campaign, which is just a timed out series of messages that send at intervals, these send on Tuesdays, that are going to provide a wellness tip to your subscribers every Tuesday. And so you just basically show up in Get Oiling once a month to make a couple of minor edits and swap out for the next month. And we will remind you to do it and show you how to do it each month. Now, all you gotta do is go over here into Get Oiling, click the Success Academy right here under start here. Go to online resources and courses and you'll find the weekly wellness content right here. So if we click here, you'll actually see all of the steps you need to follow. I'm going to go ahead and do this. Actually, I'm going to download this landing page, claim it. We can actually go take a look at it as well. You could make some modifications to it if you wish. And then coming back over, where did I go? Let me close out these paid tabs I'm not using. Here we go. The second thing that I need to do is to go over to the weekly wellness tips and the blog and find the most recent ones. So we are on, today is the last day of July and next week is the beginning of August. So I'm going to need the August weekly tips. So if I scroll down here, I can get that resource bundle, which is the campaign. See? I'm going to claim that. And you could even go in and make changes to, to the messages that we provide for you. If you wanted to recommend different products, share different tips, you can do that. And then the final step, which we actually teach in these blog posts, by the way, even the video walking you through it, the screenshots, everything. So we'll show you exactly how to keep this up to date. And you could join us a couple of weeks before you need to make these changes every month. So if I go back into my landing page here and I, let me just do a quick refresh here because I'm going to go to my settings. I'm going to go find that August campaign. There we go. I'm going to go down here to done and save. And I can now go and share this link to this page with whoever I want. I could put this on my socials, I can send it to my customers. And it would have my, my photo, my story down here at the bottom. They put in their name and email and they will start receiving these tips for all of August. We'll send you a reminder in August to come in and just do a couple of quick steps so that you're up to date for September and so on. So you have access to done-for-you content that is compliant every single month with Get Oiling. All right. So staying in touch with your customers and team is really simple with Get Oiling. At its core, what we are is a contact manager with a bunch of other stuff that you can do with it, right? So our contact manager is built to house your Young Living virtual office contact file. So when you're ready, follow the steps that we provide for you to download your VO file from Young Living and then upload it to Get Oiling. And then once you're done, you can easily filter out and communicate with contacts based on a number of factors, like whether or not they're on loyalty rewards, whether they're in a specific leg of your business and more. And again, it just could not be simpler. If we go over here to, to our dashboard and Get Oiling. Right here, we have contacts. We could even go to create here as well, but I'm going to go to contacts. And I'm going to go to import. That's one way to find it. Another thing you can do is to go to your dashboard, to the Success Academy. And you can see here as well, import from YLV or a file. So that'll take you here as well. Here are some screenshots and instructions on how to import from the VO. Once you have that file, then we can, I think I can, can I drop here? No, I'm going to find this real quick. Here we go. I'm going to upload this, confirm I have permission and start the import. And so you can see here, and again, I don't have all of this figured out here, but you would have things like their, their member number, their sponsor number, et cetera. You'll see more fields than this, but you would be able to just bring in everybody here. And then once you have them in your contacts, once you've completed the upload process, you actually have a tree viewer that's available. Let me switch back over to this slide here real quick and I'll show you what this looks like in an account that has a, a correct Young Living VO upload so that you can actually see what this looks like. All right. So in this account, if I go under contacts and we head over here to our tree viewer, you can actually see the entire game here. So if I wanted to go and maybe only send to a particular leg in my organization, I can do that. Another thing that I can do is filter my contacts for, for my, for just my customers. I could also maybe choose, are they on loyalty rewards, has subscription? I'm going to filter for only the people that have loyalty rewards based on my upload. How is, cool is that, right? But what I'd actually like to do is just to filter for my product customers, I'll filter. And then you can see that they're here. Those are, those are my customers. And I'm going to maybe send them an invitation to sign up for those weekly tips, right? So I can actually go send them out an email. If you have texting set up in Get Oiling, you could send a text. Pretty cool as well. Lots of different options there and you can communicate with them. Again, if you have a larger team or if you have team that's being supported well by other brand partners that work with you, you can choose to maybe tag certain parts of your, your organization so that you're only communicating with the ones that you need to, right? So lots you can do there and there's more training where that came from as well, by the way, if you want to deeper dive. So listen, Get Oiling is for your whole business, including lead. So this is a really important and I think often overlooked aspect of what you have available to you here with Get Oiling. A lot of the time, and this is because we are heart-centered people that really want people to, that said yes to Young Living to get the greatest benefit possible. And I'm with you on that and I'm here to help you do that. But we gotta always be looking for new people that say yes, right? So in order to be able to do this correctly, what we've got to do is add people to our contacts, right? So we need more than just our VO file when we are connecting with people and putting them into our system, right? So what we need to do is add our people that we're meeting. If we just met someone new, maybe we're, you know, So what we need to do is add our people that we're meeting. If we just met someone new, maybe we're, you know, at church or a vendor event, or we're in line at the grocery store chatting with an old friend on Facebook. You need to be adding the people that you're talking to, to your contacts and Get Oiling so that you can stay on top of follow up. So what you're going to do is you're going to look for create contact under the create menu of your dashboard. You could also go to the contacts menu and find options to do this as well. And listen, you don't need to have their actual contact information to put them in your system. If you're only communicating with them in the DMs on Instagram or on Facebook, or there's someone that you know that you would like to introduce to Young Living, but you don't know how to reach them, you can still make them a contact in your system. And then you'll use the spaces that uh the create contact supplies to put in any information that you'd like. And from here, you can add notes to their card, give yourself reminders and to-dos and more. So what this looks like is right here under create, you can create contact. Under engage, you can go to my contacts and you can click add. But either way, you put in the name, uh we'll put in uh the name here. This uh contact is going to be a prospect. Uh, I don't have an email address or phone number. This is somebody that I know from Facebook. Uh, maybe maybe I put in their Facebook profile URL here. Totally up to you. Uh, met in mom's group on Facebook, right? And just going to go and create my contact here. And now you can see the background information. I can give myself a to-do. Maybe I want to um look up products uh for sleep. And I'm going to add this to do for myself and just get reminded, you know, for, for me to look up the information that I might want to share with her, right? Uh, and that to do, if we go to our dashboard, is actually going to show up right here, all of the to-dos that you have for all of the contacts that you may or may not have. And so as you are uh communicating with this person, maybe I want to add some notes. Uh, maybe we were on Facebook Messenger and here we talked about um having a newborn. The newborn is two weeks old. Is struggling with lack of sleep. Has three dogs, right? This kind of thing. So I talked to this person just now. I'm going to add that past action. And now I've got this information here for myself to reference before I go back and maybe reach out to that person and see how they're doing next week. I can remember, hey, how's your baby, et cetera. You could keep all of these notes here. You're not stuffing it all into your brain and relying on your memory to make sure that you're staying on top of your relationships. Now, sending messages is super easy with Get Oiling. You're going to look for the quick link on your dashboard to send emails and texts and then choose just one message. So let me uh go over here uh and show you. I'm going to go back to the Jane account because she has real contacts. Uh, so we're going to go over here to uh send email, text or app notification. We're going to click send just one message. And I'm going to choose to write an email, but you could also choose to write a text here as well, right? So we're going to choose the intended audience here by name or contact tag. So if you are using tags to filter, here you have the ability to say, I want to just reach the people who signed up for my newsletter. And I use that tag, or maybe they're the people on the weekly wellness tips and I want to send an announcement to them that's separate from the, the tips that they're getting every week. Or maybe I just want to send it to a couple of specific people, right? Um, and maybe I, it's just a few people that I want to add here. And I want to send an email or text. So you can use their name or you could use a tag to create uh the audience for that message. And then you choose the format. Is it email? Is it text? And then you can write out your message, schedule it for later or send it right away. So I'm going to choose an email uh that I want to make sure that goes out on the fourth, uh and I want that to go out in the morning. Not September. There we go. On the fourth at nine AM. So here I can uh share this information that I want to share. Maybe I have a saved reply that I've created previously uh that um maybe I want to send out a newsletter. And this is my template that I use. Uh, lots of great options there for you where that's concerned. Speaking of newsletters, saved replies, that's a feature that I just showed. There's a dropdown menu for saved replies for you to just insert content into a message you're composing. And this actually makes sharing information so easy and quick. Uh, so basically what you want to do is to create a new saved reply to use as a template for your future messages. And when you're ready to send, you just use the saved replies dropdown in the message editor to populate that template or the message that you want, right? Uh, so let me just go and show you where to find saved replies. Uh, if you, again, if you're interested in creating something like a newsletter, that's where I would recommend that you start is to actually go down, down here into your content library to saved replies. Create a new one. And you can even use our existing saved replies uh to and, and, and others that we provide for you. And here's one that you could use for sure, right? Uh, and this is one that you can make, maybe make modifications to. Uh, you could maybe use this instead of being a recipe. This can be for your weekly calls or your in-person events, et cetera. So you can save this. And so long as you um don't save the subject line, you can actually use multiple uh saved replies to build a single email, which is a pretty, pretty cool feature if you're looking to create something custom that you can use over and over again. All right. So you've been introduced to the basics now. So we've customized and set up a gorgeous, compliant, sharing ready website. We've set up a funnel to collect leads and educate and engage our customers weekly uh with done for you wellness tips. We've uploaded our VO file to stay in touch with our customers and team. And we've added leads to our contact manager to stay organized towards sharing, composed and sent a message to one or more contacts and saved a ton of time by using saved replies to build messages. But listen, you're off to a fantastic start with just this because really what you need to be doing at the top of your list for having a Young Living brand partner business is having a lot of and managing well many great relationships, right? Relationships are the lifeblood of your business. So your contact manager is at the core of that and having a way to keep your people engaged and nurtured. And of course, for you to be able to send communications when you need to, that really is at the core of what you need to be doing. So if you're looking for more to do, like I mentioned before, you could do anything with us. So if you are looking for more projects, I want to introduce you to the Success Academy. So the common projects part of the Success Academy is going to show you how to do things like create a funnel. So if you want to create a funnel to um uh to, you know, to, to get leads into your system, to build your newsletter list. You want to host events or virtual meetings. You want to add or import your contacts, create a custom website, edit your menu, all of these things. If you go to the Success Academy and the very first thing that you see here, you'll, you'll check out this common projects. If you spend some time here, you will be able most likely to find probably ninety percent of the things that you may be looking to do in addition to what we discussed here today. So that's common projects. The Success Academy is always right here under the start here menu, all right? Account setup is going to guide you through common setup steps. So if you are in a, a newer account, you're going to see a little bit less setup progress. You're going to see some suggested uh things that you may do based on the plan that you have. Uh, you obviously aren't obligated to complete this. Don't let it stress you out, but there are definitely uh some setup things like, for instance, if you want to be taking payments or sending out lots of bulk mail, there are some steps that we recommend that you follow and we take you through those. There on those account setup steps. Online resources and courses is a massive library of step-by-step done-for-you templates, content, training, lessons that help you get specific things done. So if you're looking for any of the courses you're interested in that we promoted when you get started with Get Oiling, you can see that that's here as well, as well as your weekly content. You want to get into lead generation, branding yourself, getting really good at being a professional with email marketing. Uh, if you want to learn the systems that grow your business, you want to move your groups off of Facebook, well, this is here and ready for you under online courses and resources. Get help from a real person. If you're new, we are so happy to help you. If you've been here forever, we are so happy to continue helping you. This is going to give you every option that is available from sending an email off to us and getting a, I would say relatively quick response. Our team responds pretty quickly. Uh, but if you're looking for something that's a bit more hands-on, there are many options that are available here for you to uh actually speak live with someone, right? So we have human support. Uh, you will get help from a real person. So you can get an email from us. You could hire our team to do something for you. Uh, Pam hosts awesome small group calls. Uh, we've got the weekly work session which we're on right now. We've got live help on this weekly work session. And we have a Facebook group that our, uh, our community is incredibly helpful in. And of course, our team is there as well. So definitely take advantage of these things. You are not alone in anything that you do here. We are here to help. And the live training and replays is a complete library of our office hours calls. It's got hundreds of hours of deep dives uh on all kinds of topics. You can search for what you're looking for. You could check out uh by topic and see the different playlists that are available. We've done these for years and there's tons and tons of stuff there. If there's something that you're looking for, there's a solid chance that we have trained on it. All right. So you guys, that is our orientation. That's everything that you need to know to get started. And if you've got those things uh under wraps and you're ready to move on to the next project, you know where to go to find those resources. All right. So I, I want to uh obviously welcome everybody back to video. Hello. Uh, and let's get into a little bit of Q and A and then uh Kay, if you're here, I will uh be bringing you out as well. Awesome. Hi. Glad you're here. I'm going to bring you out in just a moment. All right. Lisa says, um, I have a summer wellness guide and made a landing page. So then it looks like I put the guide in the campaign or is there another way? Yes, Lisa, if you're creating a um a funnel, then the first step of the funnel is to capture their information, right? So that's what the landing page does. But on the backend of the landing page, it's going to automate your follow-up communication and tag that person so that you know they're a lead moving forward. So the best thing to do, because not everybody who puts their email address onto a landing page is necessarily going to purposefully or on accident uh give you the right email address. And so you could put a redirect to the file URL for that guide that you create. But the better thing to do uh would be to put it in the first message of the campaign. So the day zero message of the campaign is where I would link that file. And so that way you are confirming that that person is in fact receiving emails from you. That's very critical. That's why you're doing this in the first place is to get leads. Uh, but then importantly as well, this does something for you in terms of your email deliverability. Uh, you want people, when you send uh bulk or automated messages to them, to open those emails, to click what's in them and maybe even to hit reply. So um this is going to work in your favor as well if they are going finding that email and clicking the link in it. It's going to help uh the email service providers see you uh as a credible sender, which is important. All right. Jackie says, do we create tags or are they pre-built? You are the one that creates tags. Now, when you upload your VO file into your system, uh, there will be um sort of designations on your contacts that aren't tags. So like product customer or has subscription, those things, you're able to uh kind of create categories for people. Uh, but for tags, so if you wanted to say uh these are people who are on my monthly newsletter or who are subscribed to my blog or who are my chiropractic patients or whatever, those are tags that you're going to be using. And there's multiple places you can add them. Uh, you can add them when you upload contacts. So if you're coming in from some other platform where you've got uh contact information, uh, these can be applied on landing pages. You could do it manually. Uh, but you get to decide how you organize your contacts with tags. And there really isn't a limit to what that looks like. Uh, Pelas says, could you go over a quick custom setup for a new Get Euler? So we actually have a dedicated training on this. We did train on this and actually demonstrate the whole process. So um in the interest of time, and I could try to come back and do this uh pretty quickly. Uh, I do want to make sure that I can help Donna though, uh but uh let me um, let me see. If we go over here to Success Academy, I'm going to go to live training and replays and type in quick setup. Yeah. So that's it right here. We just, it's very new because it's a new feature. So I'm going to pop this in right here. Uh, this would probably be a better thing to uh to watch and check out uh because um I, you know, we came prepared to the call with everything that we knew we wanted to share and say, including the images so that was able to actually be set up um in a way that would be more in keeping with what your experience will look like. Awesome. Okay. Good, good, good. All right. Uh, let me find you here. The Kay. Hi, how are you? How can we help?
I'm good, thanks. And you?
Good, good. What you working on?
Well, I'm trying to get um contact all my people about um the share of care call.
Okay.
I wanted to know where would I start off with that? And I seem to be having some issues with my calendars not meshing.
Okay. Tell me more about the calendar issue.
Do you want me to show you?
Well, I'm in your account right now.
Okay.
So where, where is, where do, where is this coming up for you?
Look at the uh booking types. And when I click on the wellness consult member, I like to try to put in a uh dates available. It doesn't show, on one of them, it doesn't show any gates and times available. And on another one, it shows everything.
Okay. So let's do the quick look here and see, these are all of the calendars that you have connected, right? Um, and it looks like the, the one that you're using here is work time. So this is the calendar that when somebody books with you, you want them, so the email address that's associated with work time, this is the one that the calendar and everything that you want to be using, correct?
Right.
Okay. And this is the one that's associated with the email address here in your contact info, the vibrantlife.net?
Well, you know, it's not connected with that email address. It's um, should I get it linked up with that?
Well, um, Kay, are you, are you going to be a part of Bootcamp?
What? No, I'm not.
Okay. Um, what I would do, uh, because this is something we're going to go over in Bootcamp. Um, so what I would do, uh, and, and this is, I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole or a tangent here, but my recommendation would be to go to uh accounts.google.com or actually, let me just go to google.com. Um, go over here and I want to add another account. All right. So right here, you're going to go to create account. Now, it's, I'm going to assume that the vibrantlife.net, that, that email address uh that you have, um, is that hosted by Get Oiling or is that hosted somewhere else?
Get Oiling.
Okay, perfect.
Well, it's actually, it's a um GoDaddy account, but it's linked up with Go, uh, Get Oiling.
Understood, understood. So what you would do is you would take that email address, right? So this is um right, if, pretend this is correct, right? Um, actually, here, I'm going to copy this. I'm going to create account for my personal use. And I'm going to put in just move through that, use your existing email.
Okay.
Okay. Now, what this is going to allow you to do if you proceed with this is it's going to give you a Google Calendar that's associated with this email address. It's not going to, you, you're not going to be getting Google Mail, right? But it is going to be a so, like you're going to have a calendar that you can connect.
Okay.
And just make sure that, that, that this uh Google account that you create for your domain email, um, that you are connecting that also to um the computer that you use, the phone that you use, et cetera. So that it's, you know, you're able to see what your bookings look like there. Um, but that's, that's just, it, it's a detail that I think is pretty important because you're going to be sending out automatically when someone books on a calendar from an email address, right? From your website. And if that email address is different from the email address on your website, it's, it's not as optimal, right? Like it's, it just looks nicer. If you have the vibrantlife.net, then if you're getting an email from the website, it should be coming from the vibrantlife.net and not a Gmail account, right?
Okay. So then that is the calendar with which I should uh set up all the bookings?
Yes, and that would be the calendar to use. Mm-hmm. Yes.
And then how do we get it linked to all the other calendars I have?
Yeah. So all of these, so these other calendars, like we talked about in some of our previous trainings, and I know you and I have met privately. Um, these are the ones that you use to check against, right? So these are going to be the ones that maybe reflect your own schedule where your availability might differ. And so if we go into your booking types, my, my guess would be this wellness consult for members. You've got work time that you're using on calendar to use and under scheduling settings, we aren't checking any of these additional calendars. So we need to actually go in and additionally check these calendars because, you know, because, you know, these are gonna be the ones that could show I have a doctor's appointment or I have a personal thing, right? And so basically, this is what they're booking on and it's going to have whatever availability it has, which is probably only gonna reflect what your meetings are, right? Uh, and then, and then of course it'll be within these hours. But then if anything else is on these calendars within these hours, it's gonna show up as a conflict and therefore not be uh not show as, as you being available during that time, right? So I would guess that maybe in one of these you have under your scheduling settings, you're checking against, yeah, this one isn't uh checking any additional calendars. And this one actually doesn't have a calendar selected. And perhaps maybe that's why it wasn't showing. So if I put this one in work time and we save it, we can actually go and see what the difference is. So this one isn't checking against your other uh availability and it looks like, there we go. Yeah, that's there, but, but we're not checking against, uh, so if we go down here, additional calendars to check. Cause we do need to make sure that any of these, uh, if you are, have set yourself as being unavailable, uh, then those are things that, you know, we want to make sure aren't conflicting. So if we go view now, and we go into August, what it looks like to me is that, oh, here we go. Yeah, we, yeah, there we go, so thi- this should reflect your accurate availability.
Okay, but right now that work um calendar is on a Google calendar associated with a different email. So I probably need to change that out, huh?
So it's, it's fine, it's not gonna hurt anything, right? If these are people that are already communicating with you with a Gmail address, et cetera, um, it's, it's not going to be harmful to you or your business in the short term to leave well enough alone, right? Yeah, but, but I would just kind of set a goal and be mindful about uh the, the larger picture, bigger picture, right? You're putting yourself out there, vibrantlife.net website. Uh, you know, you want to be able to put the, the best professional face forward, right? And so I would set a goal to getting that um, that Google calendar associated with the domain-based email address. So a vibrantlife.net email address as opposed to a Google one. Uh, but yeah, especially if this is for your customers, people that already know you, don't be so concerned about it. But before you go and get, you know, invited to be interviewed on a podcast or something and people start Googling you, make sure that you got that tied up.
Okay, so now what will be the path that I would take to start setting up uh care calls with my existing customers?
Yeah, alright, so care calls with your customers, I would use call packages for this. And it looks like you have that here, the weekly goals check-in. And you've got that on your work time calendar and you want to make sure that for your scheduling settings, there you go, we're checking against our other calendars, that's great. Um, what I would do is um allow them perhaps to sign up uh for a series of calls with you. Um, but uh how big of, of a, an active customer base would we be inviting? Are we talking about, you know, a couple dozen people or a few hundred?
No, it would be more like around twelve to fifteen.
Okay, fantastic. So what I would do then is um I wouldn't bother with automation for this. Uh, what I would do is I would reach out to your individual contacts and um, and let me just find you uh in here. Nope, sorry, you're not in your own contact manager.
I am.
You're just in there as another name, I think. Um, here we go, there you are, you're in there as Kay, perfect. Alright, so what you do is um you reach out and, and make this personal, don't just send a blast out to everyone, but reach out to them. And um, and say, you know, I'd like to help you reach your next wellness goal. What is that? Would you like to commit to meeting with me on a weekly basis, right? And then when they say yes, you come over here and you add that weekly goals checking call package. And you go ahead and book the first call with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the one that has the questionnaire on it?
So, oh, okay, so if you want to use like an intake, well, again, because, because we're talking about like a little over a dozen people, I wouldn't really fool with that, honestly. I would just, I, I'd just call them and I would come over here under past actions and I would, under actions, I had a call with them and, and they told me what their goal, they told me what their goals were, et cetera, and you put your notes in here.
Okay.
Just talk to them, you know, if, if you are, you know, if you're a diamond and you're trying to reactivate a leg in your business, then sure, there might be a case for sending out a blast to a ton of people. But um, no, I, I would just reach out and have a real conversation, give yourself notes and then just have that regular accountability with them. Um, and, and what you're doing when you're, when you're having these calls is um, you know, you're asking the same questions each time. So perhaps what you do for your contact is you, look at that, contact progress. You could say, you know, took ninja seven days, you know, went to bed before ten, seven days, you know, and, and you track their progress over time, you could do that here as well. But um, but yeah, I, I would, um, I would use the features that are available in a um, in a non-automated way and then introduce automation uh even with the collection of data into the process when it's necessary.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Yeah, sure thing, I, I think it'll be easier for you that way too.
Okay, thanks a bunch.
Sure thing, sure thing, alright. Love it, love it, okay, let me see. Oh, Dora, that's great, I'm so happy to hear that. Live help, I'm learning more this way than step-by-step, fantastic. Well, if we have any other questions, happy to take them. If um, if you'd like to come out and chat really quick, if there's something that you're working on or if that uh kicked off another question for you that you'd like an answer to, uh, we've got a few more minutes here where we can sit together. Uh, here's the, the king of new website templates right there, hey Colin? Alright, so appreciate you guys for being here. Uh, we will be back same time next week. If you are interested in developing uh a plan for how you communicate with your people, that's everybody, your whole audience, your customers, your leads, your team going into the fall, right? As we're going into back to school, we've got holidays coming up. What I don't want you to have to do is stress yourself out by not having a plan in place going into what is often the busiest time of year. Join us next week because we are gonna have a content planning session based around fall topics. So if that sounds good to you, be sure to join us, we will be back here same time next week. And uh till then, hope you guys have a great weekend, stay cool out there.